Have a motion to let the closed meeting be closed. And the Board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the most concerned the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered. Have a motion.
Senator Maden.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt. Do it a second.
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance at a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to get a warning with senior board recognitions. Mr. Nichols.
Yes. Is everything will be taken care of at the board? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Nichols. It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you the Bluestone High School Senior of the Month, and I would like to introduce Casey Davis. Please give him your attention. Casey Davis is Bluestone High School's January Senior of the Month. He's the son of Michael and Aaron Davis, and he resides in Red Oak, Virginia. He is a trustworthy and very reliable young man. His friends always enjoy being around him because of his mannerisms. He's very sincere, he's very kind, and he exemplifies an excellent attitude. He attends Red Oak Baptist Church in Skipworth, Virginia. His school day begins very early, as he attends the Southside Virginia Community College. He's enrolled in the High Performance Technology Program. And he goes to Bluestone High School every morning by seven o'clock, and then comes back and finishes his classes in the afternoon. And he's also involved in sports. He plays football, baseball, and he was in the wrestling team. Recently, he visited U.R. and spoke to the Board about his passion for wrestling. And Bluestone High School just had their first home wrestling match, and they defeated Rodaway and Amelia, I believe. And Casey also went to a tournament at Red Oak Henry recently, and he finished second overall, so I'm very proud of that. Casey wants to take college courses and become an electrician. He does admirable work, and he is very enthusiastic when he feels like he has helped someone, and he has accomplished a given task. He plans to further his knowledge through the courses of his study, and he has received from the high performance school and go to college and get a job. So Bluestone is very proud to have him as the Senior of the Month. All right. At this time, I'd like to recognize Parkview High School Senior of the Month, and this is Nicholas Collins. Nicholas? All right. Nicholas Collins is the son of Robert and Teresa Collins of South Hill. His family worships at Ephesus Baptist Church. Makes academic success and extracurricular achievement, so excellent candidate for this award. He plays the saxophone in the band, for marching band and concert band. He is also a Boy Scout. His passion and his greatest talents are the performing arts. He won first place in a strong tail for state forensics competition last year. He plays volleyball this year and doing the same thing. He is also a scorer in one of the school plays, and he also performs at the Colonial Theater. He works two part-time jobs. I don't know whether he has told, but he has. He works at Pierce's Dry Clothes and also works at Brian's. His greatest high school moments are hanging out with his friends and participating in theater and band events. He loves going to band camp, and last year when he won at state forensics, all of his friends were very excited, which made him feel very good. Nick is honored to receive this award as well, and he feels that's very awesome. And he was glad that he was picked out of the entire senior class. With this, the college has said that Nicholas is a wonderful young man. He's very polite, he's very respectful and hardworking, and he cares about his peers. He tries to make everyone feel comfortable and part of a group, whether they're the official who can be a little different, or his colleagues or his peers or his seniors. He's generally kind and supportive of everyone. Nick will graduate with an associate's degree in May and pursue a college major in performing arts. He has already been accepted at Radford in Hollywood, but he has not finished pursuing senior other colleges because he's going to audition junior yard very soon.
Nice.
This coming weekend, so we settle our wish and well with that. He does want to become a professional stage television and movie actor, and he dreams of running and directing his own production and teaching movie actors. So congratulations tonight on behalf of the senior class at Parkview High School. Mr. Chairman, if you will, I have real recognition. Last week, we were able to hold the Division Spanglity Award, the one of us tonight, and I would like to recognize the students this time.
That'll be great.
Perfect. Our Division Spanglity Award is Emmett Ninko. Emmett Ninko is a sixth grade student at Bluestone Little School, and she's the banner of Toby and Amy Ninko of Clark Spangl. She is going to compete in the regional spanglity at the Land Bank of Virginia in Richmond on Saturday, March the 12th. So I just wanted you all to recognize her tonight and wish her well on March the 12th. Congratulations.
Congrats. Mr. Sturdivan, we also have a special recognition tonight that we would like to ask Mr. Campbell if he would work with us on. Bus driver that gave us outstanding service, and we want to make sure that's taken care of. Mr. Campbell?
Normally, I would defer a presentation of this caliber to one of y'all, too. However, when y'all gave me the opportunity to do this, I consider it a special honor. Mr. Gerald Snead began driving a bus in 1944 at the age of 15. He continued to transport students to Mecklenburg County for many years while farming full-time and raising a family of his own. As long as I've known the Snead family, they've always been kind, generous to anyone in the community in their time of need. In 2012, Mr. Snead retired from transporting Mecklenburg County students after 68 years of service. This retirement was so that he could feel the only commitment that meant more to him, and that was his family. I have known Mr. Snead for 20 years, and I challenge anyone to find a kinder, more dedicated, honest, and committed man. With that being said, I'd like to present you with this plaque as a small token of our appreciation.
At this time, this Board is going to take a five attendant break for giving us an opportunity to introduce ourselves and welcome all the participants who have received an award tonight.
We're going to continue on.
We're going to continue on with the meeting tonight. We're on item seven, Superintendent's Report and Information Items. Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, there are several items that we want to talk about tonight for your information. The first one that we have on the list is the V S B A policy regarding standing committees. That was a topic that came up as we were looking at our instructional, our informational meetings with the Board, and some questions came up about the desire to have them. Ms. Bailey had been one that had looked at the policies and recognized that there was currently a recommendation about that that was not including that school boards have standing committees, but further investigation, we have found that boards are in a position that they can determine boards' standing committees that they would like to have in place. And I would like to recommend to the Board that we look at this as an option for several so that we can take the various commitments and responsibilities that you all have as Board members and divide them up and find groups that would work on them and bring them back to the overall committee. Great. Thank you. Second item here is looking at the calendar update. I'm afraid this is giving us some room for lots of questions. Every year, of course, the Central Office works with the schools in looking at the calendars. I have given each of you copies of two. One of them represents a pre-Labor Day schedule and one a post-Labor Day schedule. The reason that the school board went to a pre-Labor Day schedule to begin with is that our high schools have had either four-by-four or modified four-by-four block schedules. It is not possible for our students and schools to complete a semester's work before Christmas if we don't begin school before Labor Day. If you go beyond Christmas, then you've got roughly two weeks that the students and the teachers are supposed to be on holiday, but they're worrying about S O L tests and exams and things of that nature. And even starting before Labor Day, the fall semester tends to be shorter than the spring semester is. And so as we've polled the teachers and others about calendars, 84 percent of those who have responded to the poll have still suggested that they prefer a pre-Labor Day schedule to a post-Labor Day schedule so that they can, the secondary schools can get their time in. A question that came up was about the idea of moving, if we move to post-Labor Day, and it was some issue related to the idea of checks. Obviously, nobody's going to get less money depending on their selection of pre or post. The issue is simply that if we go to a, when we move to pre-Labor Day, we actually had to have the Board take action so that our calendar of financing for the teachers would be from August 1st to July 31st, and they would be paid there. If we move to afterwards, then we'd have to move that policy to be from September until August the 31st. We couldn't give them time in the three days previous to Labor Day to be able to work that. So there's just a shifting that would have to go through the whole accounting department. It's not taking it any way or anything else. The main issue is instructionally, the idea of being able to start in time for the students to be able to finish their work prior to the Christmas holiday and not have that issue ahead of them for S O L tests. The other component that's built into this year's calendar is that in the current year, we have not had 180 days of instruction in place. And that also has been something that the teachers have been asking for, is to get back to having as much time as possible for the students. I think this year, we're currently at 175 days of instruction, and we want to build back up. The initial calendar was moving us to 180 days. To do that with the pre-Labor Day schedule and the way it was set up, the teachers and the students would need to attend school on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and they would like to have that time off. So we're still in consideration. There's still some surveys, there's still opportunity for input, but I wanted to give you what we're looking at so far as far as calendars are concerned, and talk with you about the main issues that we have heard come up, which is related to the parent, and talk with you about the 180 days and the opportunity for pre-Christmas completing the semester or post-Christmas completing the semester. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to entertain them. This will come up as a voting issue in February. All right. The third item actually is the liaison reports from our schools, and so I would like to invite Mr. Nichols and Ms. Staton to come up to the microphone and give their reports.
A little tall. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Nichols. Off to a, oh, excellent start to the second semester of the year. I'd like to thank our maintenance department. They've been working hours upon hours the last few days trying to keep us warm. It's very difficult in these 14, 15 degree mornings, but I think they've done a really good job, and y'all need to really recognize them for the hard work they've done. I encourage you to look at these calendars. I think the pre-Labor Day has been beneficial for teachers in terms of getting out of Christmas and being done and moving forward with your second semester when you come back. That gives you, it really truly is a Christmas break then. You can relax and kind of reset when you come back for the second semester, but look forward to working with the new members and having a good rest of the 15, 16 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Nichols, Chairman, Board Members. This past month, both bands went to all district tryouts in Richmond, Virginia, and about 30 of us went, and eight of us made the all-district band. Kellyanne Tyner is the only middle school student that made the band from Bluestone. Christine Ancahas, Jenna Doll, Molly Padgery, Madison Yancy, and Brittany Hayes from Parkview made the concert band, and Maggie Allgood, Sreen Elliot, and myself made the symphonic band. And recently, our wrestling team, like Ms. Height stated, they went, they had their first home match, and they went and competed at Randolph Henry the other weekend. And from the few members I've talked to, they have nothing but good things to say about the program, not just the sport, but they feel that they've gained new friends and confidence from feeling like they belong somewhere else. And it releases aggression, and they just feel like they belong if they have nothing else besides wrestling. Thank you.
Thank you. And then related just to comments that I might make, I'd like to bring to your attention that this Board has chosen to have not only our senior liaison representatives join us for the meetings, but we also have the junior liaison representatives come so that they can have a semester of seeing what the job is, looks like, and what is required. And tonight, we have the representative, the junior representative from Parkview with us as well, and there's Olivia Tanner is with us. If you want to rise and introduce yourself and say something.
Hi, I'm Olivia Tanner, and I'm a 17-year-old junior at Parkview, and I'm very excited to work with you all next year. Thank you.
Recognizing students and recognizing our faculty, members, bus drivers, maintenance representatives, as was mentioned earlier, is something that I feel is very important for us, and I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do a lot more of in the future because we have a lot of very positive things that are going on with the school division, and I think it's important for the community to be able to see that. Along that vein, in our comments, one of the first things that I wanted to share with you, and I'm sure we all had recognized, is that I've begun a weekly Superintendent's blog that talks about many of the current issues that are going on in education, and will include many of the special items that may have come up in the school division through the week. And I would encourage people to look online. It's attached to our A C P S Facebook page as well as my own Facebook page, so we will try to keep that updated as, on a weekly basis. I'd also like to bring to your attention, as an item that I think is very positive news, we have 13 new buses that have all been delivered, and then we will be having training with new drivers. I've talked with Mr. Mayhew today about that, and he's excited that we have, we've got them in hand, and they'll be on the road soon as they make the selection of which buses and routes they will be replacing. We'll probably be getting a good picture with them in the near future and getting that out for people to be able to see. I'd also like to talk some about the state budget. As you know, last week, the Governor had his State of the Commonwealth address. It was very good timing following the blog that I put in on our Superintendent's blog space related to the whole idea of getting the best return on investment for your education experience. There are over 250 bills in this year's legislature related to things in the K-12 education. The Governor has put education as, at the forefront of his agenda. His budget includes over a billion dollars of monies that would be going towards education, trying to make up for some of the loss that we're taking since the last 2008 dip in our economy. Very excited about that. I've attended meetings at the state level, and then last week as well as today, it seems that the, both the, both houses of the General Assembly seem to be very favorable and working towards those issues. A few things that I want to bring to your attention is that as I get updates from the V S B A or the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, I plan to pass them on to you so that you can be following along with me. A few that I'll of particular note, though, that I think we need to be keeping our attention to, one is that there is a budget item that would actually look at increasing instructional staff. They haven't identified, and it's not a part of the standards of quality, but there is an addition for elementary instructional staff that's been in the budget this year for two instructional staff persons for every elementary school. That will be coming down. Again, the question related to that is it's not built into the standards of quality, and so we don't know how long it will last, and we have to be careful about hiring persons for those becoming dependent on their services and if, I mean, at the state, would stop funding those positions. So that's a question that continues to go back to the General Assembly or the State Board about how do we get that into the right position. There's also a lot of funding that's in there related to the whole idea of giving teachers a 2 percent increase in salary. I think that no one here would deny that that's needed. The thing that concerns me more than one is if, we know our teachers need a salary increase, but if we depend on just that 2 percent, we'll be in the same position that our teachers will still be at the bottom of the scale throughout the region and throughout the state because everybody would have gotten a 10 percent increase. So we'll take it, but what impact will it have on us as far as being able to reach out and attract other new teachers? Another component of that that's a little complicated is that that 2 percent is supposed to kick in not this coming year, but the following year, the second year of the biennium. And the question is, there is a local latch that is required for that money. If school divisions are looking, as many school divisions are, at giving some increase in salary to teachers this year, will what they do this year count towards what's required next year in the local latch? And that hasn't been determined yet. We'll be watching that very closely. But it would be important for that to happen so that we could work closely with our Board of Supervisors and what will be requested of them. The other big initiative that I think we need to follow very closely is the whole idea of funding for something that we've talked about quite a lot, which is the whole issue of high school redesign. There is quite a bit of money that's put in there. They're looking at actually funding five more, at this point, it's five more, school divisions, taking advantage of being proactive with the high school redesign concept and supporting them with pilot funding to be able to do that. I think they're quite aware that the federal government and other entities are looking at the same type of concept. It reinforces many of the components that we've talked about in our times together so far and what's coming in education, so we're going to continue to take a look at that, and we'll after some of that funding if it, as it becomes available, and I think that it will. One of the important pieces of the high school redesign is a greater impact and focus on students not just having academic skills, but learning skills that are very practical in life, that we teach in our career and technical programs. I'm very pleased that one of our own, well, not one of our, our own Senator, Senator Ruff, has also introduced a bill that will be looking at giving us a lot of leeway in being able to hire career and technical certified teachers for our system as we do with academics. And we need those opportunities, particularly as we go after teachers that will be able to work with us on such things as computer science and working in areas heating, air conditioning, plant oil, electrical, those areas that they could probably be making quite a bit more money than they will if they come to work with us as teachers. So hopefully, we'll see that bill succeed. And I'd also like to recognize, because I think it's phenomenal that even in our localities, we're seeing this focus. The Clarksville Rotary Club has been contributing considerably to students and teachers and the school systems on this end of the county, on the western end of the county in the past. They've made $75,000 a year available for scholarship to our students going on to college and to those that are moving even in college further into education. And it's my understanding that at a very recent meeting, they determined that those opportunities for scholarship would not just be for those going after academic degrees, but would also be available for those seeking career and technical certifications, which is just a reinforcement of the fact of how important that is in our society and for our economic development. And we really appreciate the Clarksville Rotary doing that and want to recognize them for that as we're here this evening. I also want to bring to your attention that when I read, first coming in in December with each of the schools, I asked the teachers, because I recognize how important their input is into where we would be going and what a good job they're doing, I asked that they get back with me after thinking over the Christmas break about what they see as their strongest areas of support for students, what they do best in. I asked that they give me, answer a second question, is where they see their greatest weaknesses, where they see the biggest roadblocks. And I asked them to give me some input related to what they see as some of the capital improvement opportunities and needs of our school division. And I'd like to report that those surveys are coming back in, and I'll have this data to go by as, I think, one of the most important groups that we can talk to about those types of things, which is our teachers, because they're there with the students on a daily basis. And I appreciate their taking the time to do that and the schools sending me this information. The final thing that I want to bring to your attention, and I'm excited, although I can't give you a lot of detail, I have approached the State Superintendent of Public Instruction about a pilot project that I'd like us to see, be able to implement in Mecklenburg County that would actually create ways to give students credit and even such things as digital badges that we could acknowledge for annual daily progress for their informal education activities. Informal education being defined as those opportunities that students have for travel, for internships, for apprenticeships, for summer camp activities, for Boy Scout, Girl Scout, 4-H. So many of those things are actually leading to critical decisions about career pathways that they want to take, and they give them the practical experience of the academics that they learn in schools, and they have a desire to collect what their that they learn in schools, and they have a desire to connect what they're learning in school with what they want to be doing out of school. And I believe we're going to be hearing by February the fifteenth of the opportunity to get some support from the state in setting up a pilot program in that area, and I'll be giving more information about that as it comes along. So we've had a busy month, and we'll try to keep people up to date through the blogs and things, but this is my comments for this month, and I'll answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Any questions for the superintendent at this time, any board members? If not, we'll move on. Next, one item is chairman's remarks. I have a few. Board members, I want to ask you to do a brief barrow, and read it ready by next week, and send it to whoever we decide tonight is going to be the school board clerk. Our website is going to get updated. You can have individual pictures to describe what district you're in, and a little bit about yourself, so the people in the community can learn a little bit more about you. It has been a pleasure to work with this new board. I was anticipating it, and it is going well so far, and look forward to a good year. One of the other issues that has come up for the board, hopefully they'll have a general vote next, is to address the issue of the bus drivers' pay that had come up before. Mr. Nichols should be able to give us some information on that, and hopefully we can get that on a general vote next month. At this time, that's all I have. Next item in the public, input, let's grab it. You may even sign up.
Yeah, at this time, yes.
Okay, great. Next item is action. First item is item A. Do you have a motion to approve a notice for a regular meeting held December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion for this governor, a second by Mr. Edwards. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, personnel, we wish to approve the personnel recommendations.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt to have a second.
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Bailey. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, personnel, we wish to approve the personnel recommendations.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt to have a second.
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Bailey. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, we have a motion to approve the school board clerk. Ms. Bailey, Mr. Edwards, do a motion.
Oh, yes, I make a motion to school board appoint Paula, and I hope I pronounce this right, Jim.
Jimadio.
Jimadio as school board clerk.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards to appoint Paula Jimadio for the school board clerk. Do you have a second?
A second.
We have a second for Ms. Bailey. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Jimadio. We have an E, we have a motion to approve the school board clerk. Call for vote.
Motion approved.
We have a motion for this governor to have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Palmer. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, school board deputy clerk, we have a motion to appoint a school board deputy clerk.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Ms. Sharon Shuttleworth as the deputy clerk.
We have a motion for Ms. Bailey to appoint Sharon Shuttleworth for deputy clerk. Do you have a second? Do you have a second for Ms. Edwards? Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the notice from the organizing board to hold January fourth, two thousand and sixteen. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt and a second for Ms. Garner. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. H, we have a motion to approve the V S B A policy in the office to allow the school board to have standard committees. We approve. Do you have a motion? We have a motion for this governor?
Second.
We have a second for Ms. Edwards. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is legal counsel. We have a motion to approve the county by point of the county of McLeodore County Public Schools. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for this governor, and a second for Ms. Edwards. Call for vote.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdiven?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols, do you have any reminders for the day for next month?
We do have a few reminders for next month. February is school board appreciation month, and we hope to be able to show our appreciation and we have a meeting in February for each of you. On the ninth, there are parent-teacher conferences being held at our high schools from four to six-thirty P.M., and on the twelfth and fifteenth are professional development days for us.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. We're going to item eleven, board member remarks. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I have none.
Mr. Ritchie?
I have none.
Mr. Johnson?
I have none.
Ms. Garner?
I'd like to welcome everybody back for second semester, and hope your year started out well.
Thank you, Ms. Garner, Ms. Honeycutt.
Yes, I just want to thank the community for giving me the opportunity to participate on this board. I look forward to its challenges, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you to our teachers and our staff, all of our administrators who make McLeodore County what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I have none.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My hat's off to Mr. Taylor, Mrs. Colgate, and Clay Colgate, and whom is her son. He's the son of Mr. and Mrs. M.J. Colgate. They have over at Chase City Elementary a setup wherein it's called Project Hope, wherein that they have food, they have supplies, they have anything that a youngster would need in order to supply their need in school. And what happened, the program is not new, but Clay Colgate, the youngster, he saw what the principal and his mother were trying to do, the struggle that they were going through to have that program up and running, so he took it upon himself to go out into the community, and he solicited help from stores, from personal people, and he donated that money to his mother. And I would encourage each of you that have the opportunity to go by Chase City Elementary, go to Mrs. Colgate's class, and ask her to let you take a tour of that room. You would not believe it. I have a little joke to end it with. If I get low on food, I know where you'll find me.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Edwards?
It's, I just want to say it's a pleasure to work with a board that's, that's used, this united behind education, finally after all these years, and I really look forward to, to the future. And I think the teachers and employees have a lot to look forward to, and I just want to thank this board and thank the new superintendent.
All right. Mr. Nichols, do you have anything else?
If you will indulge me just one second, I would like to say that I realize that we were the only school division in the region that delayed for one hour this morning. I was at the region eight superintendent's meeting and got joked about that by all of the other superintendents, but I do feel like we did the best thing for our students. And I would like to have input on any way of coming up with some type, not necessarily a policy, but some guidelines by which we would look at delays when we have extreme weather conditions like this. I talked again with Mr. Mayhew this morning. It turns out that it was good that we did this. Some of our heating systems in some of our schools were a little bit tough to get started this morning, so it benefited our schools. I also found out some of our buses didn't want to get started this morning after three days of cold weather, and so it, it helped with keeping our students from being late because of bus issues as well. And I would like to take the time to remind parents that in cases of inclement weather, rather than have children going out by the roadway waiting for buses, we have most buses where they can see the houses, if I'm correct on this, and we give them more time, the